One nation under God. We need to do this all for delivery of evidence for all.
Good morning, everybody. Come on in. Well, me daughter, we do have a forum. I take a motion to approve the agenda in a minute.
So.
I'm second it. Thanks. All in favor, I.
I.
I. Close. Okay, deputy appointment.
I told Jake me to hold that until he could get here. I forgot that he.
Oh, okay.
Doesn't get here right now.
Okay. What was good? Rich?
I don't have much today. Um, so you had them quite and reduced the amount of. I haven't done anything yet. I'm being K on. The building out here for any sort of. That's what I don't probably try to. After about it this weekend or actually put the whole stuff coming into the. Well, well, or the. One stuff he's probably pretty busy. I'll try to. Catch up with him this week and get some more ideas. We're. We got our. Our federal, other bridge project finally closed out the one that Wheeler wouldn't. From a couple of years ago. We're both been. Both out of the projects, so we're kind of getting caught up. With. Clothes outs anyway with the U of M stuff.
We were down by nine.
Yeah.
That one?
No, the bridge off of Wheeler Wood this.
Oh, three ninety.
Three ninety, I'm sorry.
Oh, that's good. Yeah, that one's like six years ago.
Yeah.
Three ninety.
Okay.
Yeah, that's a whole one, but it was. It was tied with Mitchell counties and. It just is with with. I lost help. This was when we were having all the turnover and we were trying to get books filed on us. So it. And we're pretty, pretty much done with that one hopefully, so. And then all of our other ones were getting closed out. Both been. Knock them out pretty good upstairs and. Even though he hasn't been part of those projects, he's been closing them out. So it's been really helpful.
Thank you. Thanks for allowing me to move the courthouse.
Yeah.
Well, yes, much appreciated.
We did pick up a pile on there to try.
I was gonna say you picked, actually got off the lawnmower and picked up sticks too.
I both threw sticks and.
Yeah.
Roll them off. I just pile these. We're gonna let dry out. The most part of the stick they're gone and.
Cool. Much appreciated.
Thank you. Only we had something to do first.
Beginning for rich?
Well, you have members. On what the meeting Friday, but I gotta head down and get my son for college Friday.
Yeah.
Yeah. I gotta get a team thing figured out.
Yeah. All right, I'll work on that.
Yep.
We got today or tomorrow. All right, thanks. Uh, drainage. So stand for it's things.
Yep.
A lot of it goes over to. Norton district over there. We can get all any questions? If not, taking motion to approve the drainage plan. I'll make a motion for the drainage plan. So, all right. When you step in? Right now, favorite I. I. Close. Period. Okay. Uh, no regular claim.
No.
Any reports?
Here.
Yeah. They're looking to approve the sheriff report. I'll make a motion through the sheriff report. There's a second. Any discussion? All favor I?
I.
Both. Both are there. Yeah. So. Here's their motion to approve.
Perfusion.
Second one.
One four one.
Oh, okay.
I guess.
Okay. Yeah, so their motion to approve the payroll making.
Boom.
Right? Definitely. You know, they were I. I. Close. What? Uh, regulations. Cigarettes.
Cigarettes. Actually, that's end of them.
Yes, you don't. I don't see no cigarettes. Motion to approve. I'll make. Discussion.
Yeah, I know.
Okay, hearing that, all favor I?
I.
I. Both. Here, those are approved. Uh, the two maneuver management plan updates. If they're most intended knowledge of maneuver management.
They're good knowledge, maneuver management plans.
Yep. I'll second it. All right, any discussion?
Yes.
Hearing now, all favor I?
I.
I. Close. All right, those are acknowledged. Okay, we got a contract. With Mitchell County for jail services. Um, so I think their board is okay. This, they ended correctly or wrong. This was an agreement that was kind of set up with Maur County years ago. So if adjusted and. Get fixed up to stood us, right?
Yep.
Our attorneys, everybody's looked at it. No issues. Uh. Yep. So is there a motion to approve the contract for jail services with Mitchell County? I'll make that a motion. I'm also. All right. And Stephen? Hearing that, all favor I?
I.
I. Both. Very. Hey, and I have a resolution. To, um, set room and board fees. Uh, this is a resolution twenty twenty four dash two five. Is deemed desirable to infants fees such as reflective on actual cost for room and board at the Worth County Sheriff's Office. And therefore the Worth County Sheriff on May sixth, twenty twenty four, charge a fee. Sixty five dollars per day for room and board accommodation. Room and board accommodation will begin. After one hour in jail for Worth County charge. Room and board accommodation will begin after one hour for their holding of an inmate for another county. While waiting for them to pick up. The inmate on their warrant. It's further resolved that sheriff may raise or lower that fee without further resolution of the Worth County Board of Supervisors. So long as said fee is fairly and accurately, it reflects the actual cost of room and board accommodation at the Worth County Sheriff's Office. Is there a motion on resolution twenty twenty four dash two five? I'll make that a motion. Yeah. I'm just second under. All right, any questions, Alex? And to keep up with.
Yep.
Paying the neighbors.
Appreciate your work.
Yep. All right.
In savings.
Right, exactly. All right, we'll roll call vote. Robert, I, Smitty, all right, Stone, I, resolution. Thank you, Dan.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, nice. Okay, yes. All right, the resolution.
That's for that too.
Oh, it is?
Yeah.
Thank you. Building is your own, so we've got some mowing bids in front of us.
Yep.
Received two of them. New one. Who it is? For the assistance program. Right. First bid is from Brian Lund. And it appears. To be eighty five dollars per time to mow. That's weekly mowing. That's the, that's just the agreement there about posting that. Was in the paper, so eighty five dollars per time for Brian Lund. The next one is Baton's lawn care services north of. Um, mowing and trimming. Let's see, fifty dollar. Per week. And then trimming and spraying it for publicly, your public health. We to public health. Would be ten dollars as needed.
Ten dollars for a trim and spray.
Yep. And that's a can I as needed basis, so.
Right.
I won't be out of this week.
No.
Right, every other week or every three weeks. So it's.
Probably once a month, every two, third or just checking out, yeah.
Yeah.
From trees is one, twice, and both is like once or twice a year.
Yeah. Um. It says they're insured, but didn't get any.
Yeah.
Insurance with.
We asked for.
We asked for insurance, not.
And I forgot about, we should have asked for license too, for spraying.
Oh, chemical?
Yeah.
That's actually their own.
Yeah, yeah, they do it without.
Cause their liability, it's their liability if they kill.
Is there a price on there for brand chemical, like in fall for dandelions? No.
No, but that'd be something probably gonna allow me, what else?
Everyone. Um. It got in the.
That'd be on a bit.
Extended, yeah. Oh, I can't remember what the ads said. That was trimming or mowing and trimming. So we can, we could add it to it. It's gonna be.
You could ask them if something they would consider doing.
But they're both from mowing and trimming.
Hmm.
And they're both taking care of public health.
No, not Brian too.
Yeah, yeah, this is the same Brian Lund that worked for it. Yeah.
Hmm.
Okay, yeah. I just wondered if there were two more with county. No. So technically Baton is the lowest one.
Yep.
Um. I guess. Ending insurance approval. So to you guys, if we want to accept that one?
That's good. I.
I want that.
I think this one, I was looking for more work. Um, so I don't know.
Shane, Shane Baton.
Just like, I heard the name, but I didn't know he was in Longmont.
Should just check around a little and decide next week.
You can. And we could. We could take what for a week and do some. Yeah, we'll want to make sure they've got.
Insurance.
Insurance and stuff too.
And a spray and all that good stuff.
Double check on the spray and. Got. Unless I must table a decision one next week, then we'll keep these on hand and. Reach out and see. Yeah. One was good, I was feeling pretty. I'll look at it. Yeah. Uh, elevator maintenance, I keep forgetting that. That is my fault. I'll call that guy. Um. Contract services, do you want to look at windows?
We want to look at windows, get something done out.
Yeah, I got it.
It's like a twice a year deal.
Yeah, just get them done and spraying in the fall and.
Inside.
Department has decided that we need it in the middle of summer. We can then add it on.
Just ask for per time.
Yep.
This way, this way, if we add a time, we can do that.
Yep. Yeah, then we don't have to. Get a boom truck up here and.
Well, I should go look, but if those windows are all double hung, they might be able to be done from the inside.
They are double hung.
Are they? Oh, oh, okay. They can be done from the inside, so technically you don't have to.
If they're.
Yeah.
Those are big windows to do. To do. I don't know how many times you want to flip them in, but if they're good windows, it should work.
Find out if they're good.
Yeah.
Let's get some bids and the people that do the window cleaning would be able to give us a good advice as far as. Are we doing from the inside or the outside?
Yeah, if they can handle it.
Yeah, less than that'll be.
Reflecting the bid, right?
Yep.
All right. Um, anything else on any of that?
Water issue. Oh, not that.
Did you guys look on Friday?
Did not.
Yeah.
I didn't make it to town since.
Yeah, I'm guessing that. Oh, okay. The upper roof is why the first window well is filling up quicker.
Coming right off of there. Yeah, that's. When I looked a year ago, that's what it was showing me. Yeah. Okay, look at it after the meeting.
But I don't know how. It needs to be rerouted or something. From up there.
So baffled on that roof or anything.
Yep. Somebody went up there and adjusted that, but the rain gutter system. In the past, you can see it's been redone in that area.
Well, they tried to shoot it further away from the building. That's what they were trying to do because the brick is just going to.
Have Midwest look at that too.
Yeah, they're supposed to be overlooking it. Dan's, unless they were here Friday, we don't know yet. I guess we'll find out, but.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Dan's.
Yeah, requesting shower caps in her office. Called Midwest and never. I don't know if they're busy. I don't know if they got here or not.
That's probably a brick issue.
Want to have a look at that at the same time then? Again, yeah.
That's actually a brick issue though.
And you say it's still here coming out the wall later?
Uh, I didn't hear it this time.
Second to.
Window.
Coming out the window.
Well, no, he's coming in from the roof.
Here's from the roof, okay, Maryland.
It's a new spot, right?
One of them. New spot, well, one, yeah.
So then, yeah. From Maryland, first of late, a couple, three years ago, somebody looked at it, fixed it. I don't remember who it was.
Well, it was Randall and they brought it, got out that big.
Or in snap.
Yeah.
Yep.
And then they put some masher side. I don't know. They put something there, but. And you, you look at the brick on the outside, that middle is just. Wet.
Right.
So I, I don't know what that means or not.
Is it gutter over there?
Uh huh. Yeah. Uh, I'm guessing we'll for a walk around the courthouse. And then we can talk to Midwest and look at that, see if it's a, cause they do, they do metal. This deal, so I mean, making Ben flash and you're something to make it work. Midwest gonna do it too if they're. They're gonna be here, so.
Sure.
We'll see what it's gonna. See what it looks like. Uh, top of Iowa water main extension.
I just left it on there, so we have to talk about it or whatever.
Like Jason, get in contact and start going.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's supposed to be in my, waiting on the D N R. It's always been in last week.
Everything else is ready.
Um, next week, you're supposed to be approving contract and bond.
Yeah. Oh, for.
For the water.
So he has got everything. Okay, cause I know they were talking. Uh, I think midsummer, like July. Start on that, I think, so. Um, let's see the. Welcome to the finish. Let them know they got it. We're talking, yeah, midsummer, so. Which is good there. There's. Not, there's no crap damage to worry about. It's right. Nothing. It would be not anytime, so. All right, uh, people service, nothing from them today. Uh, just part.
Most, the worst on.
No. Well, this is not on somebody except over, she had a doctor's department. Uh, Department head, anybody?
Um, the only thing I have is we are. We're down one of the jail positions. We had another one leaving on the ten. Another one is one of the finalists for one of the deputy positions, so. You may see, uh, start moving inmates sooner than later, um, and. Over to Mitchell if they're long term, they're gonna get here more than the twenty four hours, but it'd be a much better savings than paying overtime to have. Jailers here twenty four seven, so Rick is working the scheduling on that. Until we can get to the whole thing is this, this makes more sense. They may see our room and board part go up a little bit, but the savings will be on the other side where our. Payroll's gonna go down.
Yeah, we're gonna do for the transition, yes, right? You know, Department heads?
I'm, uh. Preparing laptop for elections. I was working. Chelsea on it this week, um. So that's. And then after elections in June, I'll be, uh, gone for. The trip I'm going to. Thailand.
June.
June.
Be sure to. Putting a mail out ahead of time, so it'll be with, um. I'll work with, uh. Make it coverage.
Yep.
Okay. Sounds good.
Yep.
Mail?
Question in regards to Senate file twenty four forty two.
Who's that?
It's the tax, um, nears. That's they. Put several items on them, including compensation board. So I'm just wondering what your thoughts are going forward as of July.
Yeah. I don't know. I agree and disagree with compensation board sometimes, but. As far as which way to go with it, I'm not sure yet. I don't know what you guys think, but.
It's in your code now.
Yeah, I know. That's what we, that's a decision we gotta make here. Once she signs that and has something.
Once they do their job.
Well, right now they have to pick. Out of the seven, they gotta pick two of them and they gotta do the research and everything. And they can come here and get help from us on it. And then they got to put together a presentation. As to what their recommendations are. And why they think those are good percentages are justified. So, and if they don't do it, then it just drops back into our lap, which we're already looking at anyway. Right, so the thing I like. The one thing I do like about it. Is. The more minds you got, the more input you got. So I do like that part of it. The other side of the coin. You know, there's like it's happened the last few years. They come in with a. Percentage and we end up. Cutting it in half and.
Well, and even if you keep them, you can go up or down now.
And this year if we keep them, yeah, we can't, we can either go higher than what they suggest, but we can go lower, but I guess. So I'm still thinking about.
We only gotta keep two, is that?
No, you gotta keep seven, but you gotta pick two of them out of there that do all the, that would do the research and the legwork and all this stuff. And then you gotta provide them any help that they might need to do this, even to the point of. You know. It's gonna dump, it's gonna dump a gaggy laugh.
Yeah.
Is where it's gonna dump, so. But yeah, you gotta, so the board would have to meet. Earlier than what they have in the past by quite a bit to pick out the two that they want. To do the research and this kind of stuff and then go back to the board and figure out. Where they want to come in at before they make their recommendation, recommendation to us. That's the way I picked it up.
I hope we get some guidelines from somewhere.
There's. Uh, yeah, that's. I mean, I know.
As far as what goes.
About the procedure.
The procedures.
Yeah, oh, yeah, there is. I'm just going by what it says now on the miss bill.
They like to pass things and then figure out how to do it.
Yeah. How to move. I mean, when it says in there, you got to have seven, you gotta pick two out. It tells me that, all right, and they're gonna do all the work. They're gonna have to meet. The whole board's gonna have to meet, pick their two out, or, I mean, you can't just.
Right. If I didn't do it and then. They start the research, the rest of the board does their research. Then we'll meet again. And then the two individuals come up with the recommendation.
But I guess the first point is. Are you going to abolish the compensation?
I'm down the middle of the stream. I haven't decided yet. I haven't thought about it. I've just seen it out. I'm out here like a week ago.
Things as it is.
Yeah, cause it's still nice that we all have representation. Uh huh, even though.
It always gets put in our laps anyways, why can't we just say it? Well, it's true. I, I agree. I, I'm, I'm in the middle of that still. It's. I, I do respect the compensation board, what they do, and everybody gets representation that way. Uh, or the other, I just like more minds looking at it.
Yeah.
You're ultimately deciding.
But it also, if they come out with like a. A twelve. And we cut it to a six, it kind of makes. The county's not real happy with us. It's not the county, but the county employees aren't real happy with us. They're looking at this, cause the minute they come out with those recommendations. The employers are going, okay, this is great. And then we turn around and what we've had to do the last few years, it's kind of a thing. This year we were lucky. We didn't have to cut it at all.
Wow.
But, and then the other part of that omnibus bill is the back of the blue. And not so much the back of the blue, but sheriffs are gonna get paid according to. Administrative officers for. What that's saying that. It's yours gotta be comparable.
Right.
To what those are at.
Does the state gonna also pay it then?
No, you know, right, you keep thinking. Wishing.
They're gonna go with. Hopefully, so many people.
Well, I just went and Googled those kinds of wages, stuff like that and found out where those are in. And we're not that far away right now with what I figured out, but I know. Couple of years ago, we were way behind the eight ball. When it first came out, remember Dan?
That's, so you know, going to that too is.
Should go bill pay for it.
That's the thing, because you know, we got deputies that. Are on. Lower percentages than other deputies throughout the area, whatever. I know we're, we're different county, but. Now are they gonna want that increase as well? And now how do we pay for all that? Oh, it's because when you take the sheriff up, you automatically take the officers up. And then you, your deputies. Should tend to fall in line there somewhere too. So what kind of increases are we talking? I mean. Twenty thousand dollars in the sheriff's salary could come.
We did without a contact on it.
Well, no.
Yeah.
On the union. That, that contract that we just did with the union for three.
Three.
Years.
That's cut and dried. That has nothing to do with this. This is the sheriff. And then the people that aren't like the first year. The first deputy underneath you is eighty five percent, right?
Uh huh.
And then the next one's eighty?
Eighty two.
Eighty two.
Perfect.
All right, that would affect those. So, yeah, but I, it didn't, it didn't tell me in that ominous bill that we had an option of doing that.
Well, the biggest thing in the ominous bill, what it's done is state patrol is at eighty percent payout for retirement. Where the sheriffs and depth and teachers are up at like seventy eight. Sheriff's and deputies were at seventy two percent and we were having a hard time. Retaining and getting employee, employees to stay because they got a better retirement. So with this bill, they bumped it up to, art can go up to. Eighty percent, I think it is, or seventy eight percent, and it goes after twenty two years of service. It's a one percent jump every year. Up until that full one. And then every July one, there's a one point five percent cola for those that are retired. So it's. The other part of the back blue thing, that's been in place for quite a while. This is more working on. Getting the retirement to the same level, so we're competing. And I think I missed though, state control is like at eighty two percent. This will get it up where the teachers are at eighty.
But it's still coming down a painful.
Job.
You know, just like with the compensation board, we can have those guys recommend they, they can recommend six and we got no, if we have no extra funds. We have a zero.
Yep, we have to be.
Thing.
Sure, we're gonna have growth, because we have. We have no valuation growth in this counting as we lower our levies. We're gonna have to cut.
The estimation is that. I saw it still was going to raise the county, our county up about forty thousand on hyper pay.[1628.74]
Yeah.
Are you paying a real basic evening? You're paying a real too.
So.
So. I had that conversation over the weekend with a certain person about. What they did in Des Moines and screwed everything up and. I don't know that they realize.
Hmm.
The ramifications of what happened.
They don't.
They were trying to. They don't have the ramps they shouldn't have, but.
Well, it's like I said, three percent is the magic number they're using down there, three percent of allowable growth at the most. That's considering, that's not considering. If you don't have valuation growth. I mean, that's, that's mostly gonna allow you to grow your budget to three percent.
Well, and even if we did have growth, we didn't always use all of it.
Right.
I mean, if valuations went up. Sometimes levies would go down.
Correct.
I, I just, I don't know why they needed to get into that mix.
Cause they wanted to throw the loop into it.
A lot of them.
Want their control.
Lot of them have voted for it, have no idea what, what.
No.
They have no idea, they're finding out now because supervisors are just. Blasting them for it, and it's.
Cause how are we supposed to keep employees when we can't, that, that's basically what goes on.
We're supposed to provide services that they make us provide.
Mm-hmm.
When we're taking money.
I had that conversation.
It's the exact.
They're messing with this. Rural basic fund and. Our secondary roads gets their money, and if there's not seventy-five percent after all the rollbacks and stuff. And we get seventy-five percent before all that stuff, and if, by the time you get done cutting everything and you've got seventy-five percent left. Now you've affected us and there's nothing left for anybody else to, to boot.
Mm-hmm.
They need to look at that.
Hmm, that's a huge thing.
Can't tell me people weren't telling him that before they passed it.
They probably didn't want to believe it.
Hmm.
It was a big push, it was a push of. Tax cuts because this governor is on the tax cut then. But then I lower taxes for everybody to do a moment. And.
I'm amazed by taxes went up, I said your assessments went up. That's why your assessment, but also it's part of that omnibus bill about. Income tax cuts.
Yeah.
It all started because property values went up dramatically, dramatically. That's how we felt.
Well, with the rollback got big.
I know, so that's why I got.
They still paid a little more, but it wasn't anywhere near what they thought it was.
I wonder before, were they that close to market value? Yeah. And then. But they're closer than they were.
When the entire state went through all this, it was at the prime real estate time. So, now you're at the highest, and since that real estate has slowed down a touch, so it's come along, but. It was just a.
And inflation in Manchester is gonna change, I mean, not, it'd be eighteen months or more before it'll change, but we're gonna see a decline evaluation at some point here. And then what do we do?
Mm-hmm.
We're a double wavy cover.
Yep. I agree, and as far as the compensation board with me, I'm still thinking about. It's all related. It's all related.
At, at some point, the, any kind of conversation is gonna be a moot point, because it isn't gonna happen.
It's a, it's a big channel. No, and it's just. Well, it is, and we're all in the same shape.
Yeah, I mean, it's not just this county, it's gonna be.
Some counties are way.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Way faster.
Uh, nine o'clock, guys, I'm going to recess the regular meeting. And.
Open.
Okay, motion to open the public hearing on the urban renewal loan agreement. For Mark.
I'll second that.
Second for Venus, alright, roll call vote lowered, so maybe, stone eye. A public hearing is open. Um, on the proposal to enter into urban renewal loan agreement. This is where we.
And Heidi's on here too.
Borrow our funds for our. Projects using some tip dollars, correct?
Yep.
But I don't really know the timing of everything yet, I know since we didn't, we're not. We're not ready for six million dollars of debt. Because the money would just be sitting there, so I, I do at least have to have. The capital fund positive by the end of the year, so we'll probably do an internal loan. Through the highway one oh five, so the capital fund is positive. And I don't know if. Heidi has some words of wisdom on it too.
Hi, this is Heidi, can everyone hear me?
We can hear you.
This is Heidi, I have, can you guys hear me?
We can hear you, can you hear us?
I sure can, good morning. Um, well, what you have in front of you today is the fini, uh, basically the public hearing for the finance here. Uh, finance hearing for the up to six million dollars to fund urban renewal projects, um, for the. Facilities that were put in the urban renewal plan, uh, this past March, um. It's not, you're not going into debt today, this is just the public hearing. With a resolution to give you that authority to proceed at a future date, um. As Jackie stated, we'll be doing some internal loans to, to kinda clear up that capital project fund. However, the full borrowing, um, want to make, um, make that a time that. When, um, the board has some pretty substantial numbers on, you know, um. On how much it's going to cost and from a construction standpoint, um, you know, when that project is going to get started. Don't wanna borrow, you know, two head, two years ahead of a project, so. Once you have an architect, um, and have some preliminary numbers in a timeframe, then we'd look to, um, schedule that borrowing. Uh, to coincide with the project and the project. So you have those funds.
Yeah, sounds easy enough. You guys have any questions for Heidi at all?
Oh, yeah. Know what we gotta do?
Does the public have any questions or comments? For us? Not hearing any, I am gonna take the motion to close the public hearing.
So move.
Alright, there's a motion by Mark.
Second it.
Second, yes. Alright, so roll call vote lowered, so maybe, stone eye, public hearing is closed. I will reconvene our regular meeting. And our resolution. To, um, enter into a law agreement, not to exceed six million dollar the current item. And we can start this once we have. Numbers for a project. Am I proper in saying that?
Yes.
Yeah. Their motion to approve the resolution.
I'll make that a motion.
Alright. And it's got. Hearing none. Do a roll call vote lowered, so maybe, stone eye. Resolution is adopted and. We can move into a project. Move forward. Alright. Hey, thank you Heidi for your assistance with all this.
You're welcome, um, and we'll be in touch as the, uh, project starts moving forward.
Okay, sounds good, thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone.
Yeah. Uh, I think we're down to any more department head discussion, I guess, so did we pretty well cover something that we don't know about yet?
No, I don't know, we gotta make that decision.
Was that, I mean, once, has it been submitted yet?
Uh, it was last week, wasn't it, yeah.
He signs the line, I know.
That was the only one she's signed so far.
Yeah.
And that makes effect.
The lifers.
But, yeah. Yes. We're gonna figure it out. We're projection, we wanna go.
More efficient.
Mm-hmm.
Keep it on the agenda. I guess we're gonna make a decision.
Right. I just leave those department head discussion.
Yeah.
If any other department heads want to discuss, we sure can, hey, is Mark Thomas on?
Yes.
Mark, can you hear me?
Yes, I'm here.
Hey, I know last, I think it was last fall. We talked about the batteries on the siren at the welcome center, we were gonna do it this spring. Do you remember that?
Yes.
Okay, you taking care of that?
Uh, no, it's, um, I thought secondary roads, we're gonna go out and, and look at them and. See if they were, because they have to get up there with a boom truck.
I just. Last fall, I thought I'd bring it up now that.
I think we did talk.
I'm pretty sure I forgot about it.
Well, we, I remember that too, so we need a boom truck to get to it, well, why would we hire anybody, we got.
If we got one, so.
I just wanted to bring your attention that. Hey, batteries go belly up, you haven't lost your mind yet?
Yeah, totally.
We, we all forgot about it most second.
Or needles, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Rich, if they wanna, uh, if they wanna get ahold of me, I can meet them out there sometime, just, it won't be. Wednesday, Thursday, or Friday this week, I'll be gone to a conference. But, uh, next week sometime, if, if somebody wants to go out there, I can meet them there.
Good. Thank you, Mark.
Yeah, no problem.
Okay. Uh, Supervisor Weekly, yes.
I didn't have anything, but I did have an individual, Paul Burley, that takes care of the flags.
Yep.
They've got all their flags in the trailer. At the concert, or our new conservation building on the West End.
Okay.
And he was wondering if. It would be okay to still leave them there or. What we thought of it. And I said, well, if we can't leave them there, we might have room in the old conservation building along with the. Uh, the two buses.
Yep.
That we could stick them in there.
Think we could find rooms.
But he'd like to know where we'd like to. If there'd be a possibility for, for them to store that on our property and where we would like it at, if Jim doesn't want it there. And I thought Jim was gonna be. What's that?
Do they need to be inside or outside?
Inside. Yep, it's in the west end of the building on the inside.
Yeah, I think if Jim's okay, I'll leave them there for now, until we get something.
I'm sure he is.
Probably just go over here. This way they can. Even a bulk of their stuff.
So, calling back and telling him to leave it there and let him know he wanted to move it over here later.
Yep.
Okay, I will give him a telephone call.
Yeah.
Have you talked to Jim about Sherman Ethel?
Yes, I talked to Jim. Uh, that. Saying Monday that I brought it up. He was not gonna be here last Monday, but he was gonna, he told me he could be at this meeting, so I set up. He must, something must've come up, cause I thought he would be here, but he was gonna check with his board members to see. What they thought of Sherman Ethel. Jim wasn't sure that our naturalists would have enough time to cover both. Manly and North of Kanset plus Winnebago, he didn't know how much Winnebago's up. Well, how much it involves over there. But, uh. I guess my attitude is, if it's a possibility, it might be something that, even if it, it's not perfect world. If we gotta start making cuts, is it better to back off now and. Dare a naturalist or end up losing people down the road?
The more we do know, the less we'll be doing later.
And that's my theory on it too, so.
I think we gotta explore it, it's gotta be explored to see if it can happen.
Yep. But I did talk to him, yeah. He, uh. He couldn't be a week ago, but he was gonna be here today, he said, he said he could make this one, but I don't know something must've happened.
So, doing this county is two to three times our size, if we don't have more than one naturalist to share, we'll go on more school systems than what we do here.
And so, should we talk basically?
Yeah, if you want to.
Okay. Board members, not gonna stop.
Maybe they need to talk about how much compensation can come from the school student.
And he brought that up, and I, he didn't know the exact figure. And I was gonna ask him. Do you have any idea?
I'd have to look.
I don't know what they can't say.
They get from Manly and they get from north of those two schools, North of Kanset and. North Central, they get compensation from them.
Well, that's another thing we have. Thing about do is, the schools gotta start cutting stuff, is like, every summer they're gonna cut.
They're gonna be cut.
You know, pretty, you know.
Yeah, there's all kinds of bridges.
We're not, yeah.
Still comes out of, still comes out of a pie, still comes out of taxpayers, probably no matter how you wanna look at it, so.
But it's better to share them.
You rob them one, rob.